Probably we should hide Jay for right now.
Bring back in the closet. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Boris Sleckman's called to order May 13th, 2021 at six o'clock. I'm gonna take a call to order. I'm gonna open the public meeting and we'll call Sheila.
Here.
Pat? Pat? I think Pat's muted. But he's here, I see him.
Pat's not here. But we can't hear you, Pat.
Oh, now he's muted. Dave's off.
Yeah, he's muted.
Say hi. Raise your volume.
That happened to me yesterday.
Well.
Can we hear Pat?
Yeah.
Pat, do you wanna try disconnecting and getting back on and seeing if that fixes it?
Ed's not here. Mike?
I'm here.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. This is the virtual board of Sleckman meeting. We are using the Zoom conferencing format. The webinar ID is nine three one four two seven three two two four zero. If you will make a comment on an agenda item, please use the raise your hand feature on your device. The moderator will be notified and will notify yourself before making any comment. How you all set, Pat?
Pat, do you have a Mac? Do you have a Mac?
Okay. Item two. Approve the April twenty second, twenty twenty one Sleckman's minutes meeting. I have a first.
Second.
I have a second. Okay. Sheila?
Aye.
Pat, just raise your hand. Okay. Ed, not here. Mike?
Aye.
Alan says aye. Motion carries.
Can I give just a little bit of advice to Pat?
Sure.
Pat, go into settings into your speaker and look at what you've got your settings on there because you wanna use your computer microphone. Okay, I'm ready.
Okay. Item three, public forum. This is an opportunity for anyone who wants to address the Board of Sleckman with an issue that is not on the agenda. Do you see any hands raised? Okay, item four, joint public hearing with the planning board on proposed amendments to the land use ordinance on the June eighth municipal ballot. I'm gonna bring the planning board up.
Turn the TV on. You have Nina and Laurie.
Is that all we have so far?
We need another one. We're looking for Tom Boeck or John Harcourt.
Tom is not gonna be on. Okay. I thought there were gonna be another couple of members on, so.
I thought John was gonna join us.
I see John Manda.
I'm gonna open the public hearing. And I think the planning board needs to open theirs.
Okay, I'll take a motion to open the public hearing. Laurie? You want a second?
I'll second that, yes.
Okay. Do you approve?
I approve.
Okay, John, do you approve?
I approve.
And I approve, so it's okay.
Okay. Excuse me. So, the public hearing on the following ordinances and questions on the June eighth municipal ballot are: A, proposed amendments to the animal control ordinance, proposed short-term rental ordinance, and proposed amendments to administrative code. And I think Kate Burke, is she here?
No, no, this is on mixed use in Dock Square, so Werner's gonna give a little brief overview.
Okay. Sure. Yeah. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. So yeah, so several years ago, voters approved residential mixed-use standard in town that would allow two residential units to be built above a commercial structure without figuring a larger lot size requirement. And since that was approved in 2015, we have not yet to have any constructed. Based on recent feedback and a review of potential properties, sworn article would add residential mixed-use to the Dock Square zone and increase the number of residential units from two to four, as well as multiple buildings provided. All applicable setbacks and coverage requirements are met. These modest tweaks, this use, be made such that several existing properties could more easily be retrofitted to meet the intent while retaining the requirement that the residential units be maintained and used as primary residences. Where Dock Square has a number of these currently, it seems to be a logical revision. It gives property owners more flexibility as well as continuing to provide some more year-round housing options. On-site parking is required as part of this use. Housing remains an important issue for Kenny Bunkport, in particular finding ways to provide year-round housing. And these modifications will provide some regulatory relief to help assist in netball.
This is proposed as a conditional use, right?
Yes, that's correct. Residential mixed-use has always been a conditional use, so that continues to be the case, subject to a planning board site plan.
Is there any, anybody out in the audience have any questions? Any hands? Okay.
So, we have one. We have one.
Hi there. I was just, how are you? Just asking a question. When I met earlier today with Werner and Laurie, they said it's very hard for those people to get those apartments rented. So if they're empty all the time, which what I was, you know, they told me, why do we need to double them? You know, if they're empty and they can't rent them, why do we need twice as many? My question is.
Yeah, Werner, I think what you were talking about is the storefront piece is sometimes empty on the second floor.
Sure. Yep. Yeah, no, we've had some circumstances where we've had empty commercial space on the second floor, you know, which hasn't been, you know, which is sad vacant for some time. And so, you know, that's, you know, that's part of the thought process of having residential mixed-use and having that residential space being on the upstairs, you know, as opposed to the downstairs. It's very typical, you know, in a downtown scenario to have that. You know, going from, you know, from two to four units, you know, I think it gives some, you know, it gives some more incentive, you know, for property owners to consider this, you know, to make those residential units, which we know that we need, but it also still requires them to have parking.
Right. So how many buildings are we talking about that have parking besides Ben &amp; Jerry's? And if you talk to Jenkins into giving up their private lot, how many are there?
Yeah, I mean, I don't have an exact number of which properties could benefit in Dock Square from this, but, you know, there, you know, there could be, you know, I could, I could see that there could be anywhere from, you know, anywhere from four to six properties that I can readily just kind of think of that could potentially benefit.
And have they asked for this?
We have had, you know, we have had discussions with one of the property owners who has requested.
So one has requested. That's it?
And it could benefit others as well.
Yeah, but you would think if it would benefit them, they might have said something, don't you think?
I, you know, I can't, I can't speak for other property owners.
Okay. I just wanted to know what numbers you were talking about. Thank you.
Any more hands up? So, we're not gonna talk about the animal control ordinance? She's not here?
No, we are, but this is just the planning board piece. We do this jointly with them and then we'll do the other ones next.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I have one other thing just to note on this. I can report that the growth planning committee discussed this amendment at one of their recent meetings. And they as well found it to be consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Okay. What's next?
So, if you're all done with that, then you should close the public hearing on that and the planning board will close the public hearing and they can adjourn.
Okay. I close the public hearing.
Planning board, close the public hearing. Do we need a vote on that, Werner?
You don't need to vote to close the public hearing, but you do need to vote to adjourn.
I'll second that. So, Larry, are you in favor?
In favor.
John?
In favor.
And I'm in favor. We're closed.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Bye, guys.
Bye.
Now, do you wanna talk about A?
So now you need to open up your Board of Sleckman public hearing. Yes, and we'll go through those three.
Okay. We'll open the public hearing.
So we have three items under here that our ordinance discussions. The first is animal control ordinance. And we have Kate Bell Burke in the audience and Richard Driver and John Dykstra, who have a brief presentation on the changes of the animal control ordinance.
Okay. Can you bring them up?
I'm there with my husband's picture, sorry.
I was gonna say, Kate, that's a nice picture.
I'm reenacting in my spare time. It seems to count, so. Is John here yet? John did the great graphics that we'll see. And also, since I'm a computer phobe, he knows how to screen share, so he's absolutely important to this present little presentation. Okay, looks like he's here, even if we're not seeing his picture. Okay, so just brief, well, briefly, I'll try to be briefly, to discuss the proposed changes in the dog ordinance. The last time, the present ordinance was amended was in 2015. And since that time, there have been some significant changes in our beaches, particularly at Goose Rock's Beach. So, last fall, four of us, the beach, we decided to take another look at this. Four of us, myself, Carol Sherman, Jen Wasserman, and Joanne Guston, agreed to be a subcommittee to look at this and come forward with some proposals. And I have to make very clear to anybody out there that is listening that every single one of us are dog owners, longtime dog owners and dog lovers. And never once throughout any part of this process has there been any intent to try and ban dogs from the beaches. Really, John, do you wanna go on to the next page? Talk a bit about, they're really, our main goal is kind of, first of all, we looked and we said, the beach really has three constituencies, we think. There are individuals and families, and then we have the endangered birds, and then we have dogs. And so, the goal of this was to design a dog, changes to the dog ordinance that protect the use of the beach for people and the endangered species while keeping dogs a part of the beach. The other thing that was a major goal for us, the existing dog ordinance is a little bit complicated. We've seen people standing at the lines at the entrance to the beach, kind of scratching their heads, trying to figure out, gee, you know, what applies this time of year? What am I allowed to do? And after discussing it with the chief of police too, we all agreed that the simpler we can make any rules, the better it is, the more likely it is that the public will understand it and hopefully will voluntarily comply. And if they're not, the easier it is for law enforcement to deal with these situations. So simplifying the rules is another big goal here. John, do you wanna flip to the next one? So, the main issues we were addressing, first of all, as we've mentioned, we, as we are, we do have a special situation at this beach because thirty, over thirty years ago, Goose Rock's Beach was declared an essential habitat by both some federal and state agencies to protect two endangered species, the piping plovers and the lease turns. And at the time we last did this, redid the dog ordinance, most of the nesting for either of those endangered birds took place at pretty much the far west end. And in the, in the existing ordinance, we carved out an area where we knew they usually were. Unfortunately, none of the bird species ever read that ordinance, and now they are nesting the full length of the beach. Last summer and actually already this summer, we have piping plover nests the whole length of the beach, including at the, right near the farthest east end, the Jeffrey's Way entrance. So, we have to look at this from the whole beach. The whole beach, we have a response, we have these endangered species and we have a responsibility to protect them. As another town found out, in fact, the town does have a responsibility and can be held liable if an endangered bird is damaged by a dog. And at the time, at the town of Scarborough, several years ago, was fined $10,000 for what the agencies viewed as gaps in their statutes or ordinances and efforts to protect the birds. Since that time, there's been substantial increase in fines that can be levied against something like the town if they are found to be sort of derelict negligent, and that goes as high as $25,000. So, so that was an important issue of how can we best protect the birds during their nesting season, which runs from April first through September fifteenth. Okay. Secondly, the numbers of people on the beach, using the beach, has substantially increased. I think all you need to do is take, try to take a walk down Goose Rock's Beach on a, on a summer day or a hot summer day. And particularly if it's high tide, it's pretty hard to find walking room. It is very, much more heavily used than it used to be. And it is not only the summertime. We're finding, I think all of us are finding that there's many more people here in the quote offseason. In the past, well, even certainly when we built our house twenty-two years ago, so the first time we were able to come up on an offseason weekend, we drove around, we saw very, very few houses that had lights on. We truly were a seasonal community then. Just the last winter or so, if there are a lot more people moving here, like we did, to retire here full-time and enjoy the beautiful place we've loved to be coming, you know, seasonally and now be able to live here. And there also are a lot more people who are finding that because the, I mean, part of this obviously was due to COVID, but I don't think it's necessarily gonna change that dramatically as people have found out that in fact, they can work remotely and they have more freedom to be places they'd rather be, such as here at the beach. So if you drove around Goose Rock's Beach anytime this winter or even last winter, I think you would see a lot more houses, I don't wanna say 50%, but a fairly high percentage of houses in the offseason, in the cold winter months, that have lights on and, you know, cars and driveways, and it translates to many more people on the beach, just enjoying being able to take a walk and get fresh air. So, we had to look at both times of the year. And secondly, and lastly, there are, where there are more people, there are gonna be more dogs. Yeah. We're starting to see numbers of dogs on beach also has increased significantly. We've had more complaints about dogs off-leash frightening and annoying people, as well as endangering the nesting birds. If you just look at the statistics on citations issued for violations of the existing dog rules. These are citations, I know, you know, the police department has talked with us about the fact that they're, you know, trying to be as user-friendly as possible. So their first, educate people and hope that they will voluntarily comply. So if you get to the point of actually issuing citations, you had, you know, some, probably some interesting dog violations there. In 2019, we had a total of nineteen citations issued. In 2020, we had, that number doubled to thirty-eight violations that were cited. So, there's more intensive use of the beach in many different ways, by the birds, by the people, and by the dogs. So, okay, then, John, you wanna go on to the next one? Thanks. We didn't just do this in a vacuum and scratch our heads and say, oh yeah, what do we think should happen? We did a lot of researching and talking to different groups and people. Here's a quick list, inland fisheries and wildlife, Maine Audubon. We talked with Laurie Smith, we talked with the chief of police, we've talked with, we talked with Scarborough to find out, you know, what their experience was in dealing with the, the incident they had a couple of years ago. We've talked with various residents of Goose Rock's. And we have looked at the dog ordinances of pretty much all the other beach towns, up and down, you know, from Scarborough down through York. So, okay, let's talk about, take a quick look at, we have a graphic here of what the proposed ordinance would look like. I'm gonna go through it very briefly here, and then I wanna go through each of the timelines, the timelines, and talk about what the existing rules are for those timelines, why we think they need to be changed and what we're getting to. But you can see there's, there's, right now, April first through June fourteenth, it's, this is the period where we have nesting going on. We had very complex rules before, I'll talk about, but right now, it's very clear. Dogs can be on the beach any time of day, they just have to be on leash. When you move into the summer months, we actually are proposing allowing the dogs more time on the beach. Right now, they have to be off the beach by eight-thirty and cannot come back on till six. We're shortening that to not, the time they can't be on the beach to nine AM to five PM. So they get an extra hour and a half each day. It just, when they're on the beach, again, because of the birds and the nesting, they have to be on leash. And then there's a brief period, Labor Day, first of all, we, that, that period when they cannot be on the beach during the height of the day has been shortened to Labor Day. Right now, it runs all the way through the month of September. So from Labor Day plus one, through the middle of September, they can be on the beach any time of the day, which is new for them. They just have to be on leash. Then, starting September sixteenth, that's when you can have dogs off-leash if they're under voice control. And I have to point out that voice control means that the dog returns, I'm looking at the definition that's in the ordinance right now, means that the dog returns immediately to and remains at the side of its owner in response to a command from its owner. Okay. But it exists, right now, we thought, we think we should expand the time, in the offseason even, that dogs should be kept on leash so that people who would like to take a walk without having to be worried about being accosted by a dog who's off-leash and romping around, or people who are walking dogs on leash, because off-leash dogs and on-leash dogs are often not a good dynamic. Anybody who knows dogs and dog temperament and dog interaction will know that. So we expanded that amount of time for leashed time or free walking time from two hours to six hours. We'll go into some explanation about that. So that's just a quick overview. And it's a simpler look, a simpler schematic, I think, than what is currently in place. Let's start, go, take a look at April first through September fifteenth. We discussed it briefly. Let's start, go, take a look at April 1st through September 15th, we discussed it briefly. Right now, it's a sort of complex arrangement in that timeframe. It is a nesting period. We had identified under the previous ordinance, this west end plover protection area, dogs had to be on leash all the time there and they always need to be on leash within 200 feet of an identified nest. However, on the rest of the beach, which was half of the west end, west beach and all of the east beach, dogs could be off-leash from six to seven-thirty AM and then the rest of the day, they had to be on leash. We're changing that, suggesting changing that both for simplicity and to protect, to on leash all the time, all across the beach, from April 1st through September 15th. That's the nesting period. We need to protect the nest, I mean, a bird can be killed between six and seven-thirty as easily it can be killed in the afternoon. If you have off-leash dogs on the beach, you have danger to the protected birds. Whenever you have dogs on leashes, there is another little, couple of little benefits. First of all, keeps the beach cleaner because if you've got a dog that's on a six-foot leash or a 15-foot leash, you're going to be much more aware of when that dog leaves a deposit on the beach and hopefully you're, as required, you're going to clean it up. If your dog's romping all around, you're not necessarily going to be aware of that. So that's a benefit for other beachgoers using the beach that hopefully we have, keep the beach cleaner. And then lastly, of course, by going to always on leash, it prevents unwanted human or leash dog encounters with off-leash dogs. So, let's flip to then the summertime, June 15th through Labor Day. Like I said, existing rules say that it's a little complex, from six to seven-thirty, the dog, dogs can be off-leash, but they have to be in voice control. From seven-thirty to eight-thirty, they can be on the beach, but they have to be leashed. From eight-thirty to six, they have to be off the beach completely. And from six PM on, they can come back on the beach, but on leash. A little confusing. And also, that, that one, that timing, that off-leash, I mean, that off-the-beach timeframe, that whole rule applies all the way through the end of September. So what we did was say, okay, take away the off-leash time because again, you've got the same problem with the birds, that they can just as easily be killed during an hour and a half as they can all day long. But in addition, we'll give the dogs more time on the beach. Shorten it by an hour and a half, so it's nine AM to five PM. And, but, you know, when they're allowed on the beach, they have to be leashed. Also, that we took away, we ended that, you know, middle of the day off-the-beach time at Labor Day. So they gained almost a month of being able to back, be back on the beach any time of day, except for, you know, half of September, that has to be on leash, again, to respect the nesting period and the migrating period. So, okay, let's look at the off, quote off-season. Right now, off-season doesn't begin until October 1st and it then, again, ends March 31st. Again, dogs allowed on the beach any time of day, but right now, they only have to be leashed for two hours from 12 until two. And when we looked at that, we thought a couple of things. First of all, there are more people who are using the beach in the off-season. So you have more people trying to take a walk and it felt fairer to give a little bit more time to those people who want to take a walk without being accosted by dogs. And we've had complaints of people who have been jumped upon or almost knocked over by dogs unleashed. And so we felt like it was fair to take a little bit more of the day for leashed and, you know, dog-free walking. So we increased that from two hours to six hours. I know some people feel that that's, doesn't feel fair, but if you look at it in the middle of the winter, when the days are the shortest, that gives off-leash and leash approximately the same amount of hours on the beach. As, when you're earlier in the, in the year, like in the fall, and when you start getting into March and, you know, getting closer to daylight, saving time, in fact, the off-leash time is bigger, a longer amount of time than the leashed period. So, we felt that was a little bit fairer than just giving people two hours in which they can walk the beach, you know, dog, unaccompanied by dogs jumping on them or anything like that. So that is kind of a summary of this. I hope it makes some sense to everybody and I'm happy to answer any questions. But in summary, the Beach Advisory Committee believes that the proposed changes to the dog ordinance recognize the changes in the beach over the past few years and increase the necessary protections for endangered species, better balance the interests of people, endangered birds and dogs, and also simplify the rules. So they're easier to understand and follow and if need be, enforce.
You need, you need questions for Kate? Any hands up?
I'm going to ask John to stop sharing just so we can see the hands easier. So we do have somebody with their hand up.
Hi, thanks. I just have a, it's a great presentation and as a dog owner who enjoys having their dog off-leash on the beach in the mornings, I'm, I'm fine with it, I understand the rationale. The one thing I would say is if the effort is to simplify the ordinance, September is still pretty busy from the 1st to the 15th with people in Kenny Bunkport and renters. And I'd just say to keep it simple, I would suggest eliminating the 15-day separate rules and, and keeping it all the way through to, summer rules all the way through to September 15th. It's been that way, I just, I don't think it's a big enough advantage for the dog owners, speaking as a dog owner. So that would be my only suggestion is to keep it even simpler is don't have that 15-day separate rule period. Thanks.
You're welcome. Any more hands? Richard, is there anything else that you'd like to add? Oh, okay, Nina.
Now, I got it now. Okay. I'm going to make a couple of comments that are not going to make people happy, but I'm going to say it anyway. And I've been a dog owner and now I'm a dog owner again, so I'm not against dogs, I like them very much. It's not only the people who have increased in the use of the beach, it's the dogs. For several years now, I no longer will go and bathe at Booch's Beach, simply because of the number of dogs I see when I'm walking in the morning. And I don't care if you pick up every piece of feces there, you're not going to be able to pick up the urine. I know that Goose Rock's Beach is having problems with pollution on and off and I don't think it improves the pollution at all to have dogs urinating on the beaches. So, in the interests of people, in the interests of wildlife.
People are urinating in fucking water, the people, people are doing way worse.
That's fine. That, that's something else you have to control. I'm going to a different subject now. I'm talking about dogs urinating. The number of dogs that are urinating have increased considerably. And so, excuse me, as a dog owner, I won't take a dog to a beach, simply to protect wildlife and people and keep the pollution down. And frankly, I don't believe that dogs belong on a beach, especially during bathing season. I told you my comments would not be, make people happy, but that's how I feel.
Thanks Nina. Sheila. I see a hand there.
Nina, I have to say, I agree with you. I think in the summertime, when we have babies and young children and the public using the beach, I, I just don't see it as healthy to allow dogs to do their business on the beach. That's my say. The rest of the year is fine. I think summertime is a, for us, in, at Goose Rock's Beach is a, is a different situation.
Okay, thanks Sheila. Richard, you had your hand up, didn't you?
No, I didn't, but let, let me just say that I, I understand what Nina is saying and Sheila, but you have to, have to recognize that it's sort of a juggling act. They are competing. People who have used this beach for ages and have had dogs on the beach, and there were those who don't like dogs or have had a bad experience with dogs and say, no dogs on the beach, or dogs leashed all the time. The, the four members of the subcommittee, they struggled with how to, how to have a compromise between all of the competing people and, and ideas about use of the beach. And I think they did a great job. It may be that it's sometime in the future, it will have to be changed and maybe it will be more restrictive. But right now, I think what is proposed is, is a reasonable compromise and that's from a dog owner and dog lover as well.
Well, I, I do have to agree that the, the grid for the changes is a lot simpler, a lot easier to read. So for that, I think the committee did a very good job.
Okay, any, any more hands?
I think there's another hand up, Dave.
I just want to respond to Richard. I understand that people have used the beach with their dogs for years and years and I think it's kind of sad to take them off the beach. But the number has increased substantially and I'm talking about pollution, basically just pollution. The system would work fine if dogs weren't urinating and defecating on the beach. We have dog parks, it's not necessary for dogs to use the beach, there are other places that they can recreate. So, you know, that's just my take on it. And I'm sorry to interfere with people's interests, but sometimes for the public good, to control pollution, and we're all dealing with pollution at very high levels in all sorts of ways today, you may have to take a more drastic stand. That's all I'm saying.
Thanks Nina. Let's move on to B, proposed short-term rental ordinance.
So, Warna, is going to give a brief overview of the short-term rental ordinance. Warna, are you with us? Oh, there he is.
Yes. So, yes, so as many of you all know, you know, we've spent a fair amount of time over the course of the past year working on this proposed short-term rental ordinance. Just briefly, what it, you know, you know, what this is, is this ordinance is, will require the disclosure and licensing of short-term rentals operating within the town of Kenny Bunkport and will, you know, also apply a certain number of, of standards, such as some life safety standards, as well as parking standards, things of that nature to, you know, in order to protect property owners, renters and neighbors, along with the potential to limit the number of short-term rentals within the town. And as we've talked about, the historic nature and long-term tradition of short-term rentals at Goose Rock's, you know, Goose Rock's will still be required to, to have a license for short, for short-term rentals, but they won't be subject to the, to the cap. And this, this ordinance as proposed will, you know, apply specifically to residential dwelling units.
I know, we all worked on it really, really hard and I'm glad that this did make the next town meeting. So, is there any questions, help the audience on the short-term rental proposal? Okay.
Can you hear me?
We can. Hi Sharon.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Good, good. Just a couple of questions. One has to do with the ultimate cost of, of the license. What, what did you guys decide on? I know we talked about it and there were several tiers and then it was taken kind of away and we aren't sure what that license is going to cost.
Yeah, I don't have, I don't have the numbers specifically in front of me, but we, we did discuss the two tiers. They were, they were relative to, to, to a bedroom, to a bedroom count. So there was one tier that was going to be for, I believe that was one, three, and then four plus was going to be, you know, a different tier. Yeah. Four.
But, but there were several proposals, Warna, right? I mean, there were several mockups of, you know, it could be this, it could be that or it could be that. And I don't know what happened with that, but if you could share that with us, that would be terrific.
So, so I can blend some thoughts. We had, I think, a memo for the selectmen, we had a scenario A, B and C. And scenario A was that tier one or those zero to three bedrooms would be $250 a year and tier two would be four bedrooms and up would be $500 a year. Scenario B was tier one would be $325 a year for zero to three bedrooms and tier two would be $575 for four bedrooms and up. And then scenario C was $500 for tier one or zero to three bedrooms and $700 for tier two for plus bedrooms. So the selectmen have the authority to set the fees as they do all fees, so they wouldn't vote to set those fees until the ordinance was enacted. But the feedback, I remember, and I'll let them speak, was that they were, I thought, inclined to go with scenario A, which was the lowest of the three fees, which was $250 and $500.
That's what I remember, yes. What about you Mike?
Yeah, I agree. It was.
Also, I wanted to find out, it seemed like when the budget was posted, that there was information relating to the revenue that the short-term rentals are bringing to the area, to the town. And it looked pretty impressive, the numbers, which I was happy to see, but not really surprised. And so I wondered, you know, what, why we are going forward with this whole licensing thing. I saw that there was, I don't remember the exact number, but there was, I think it was like $115,000, what is it, a position that this person or people would be in charge of the regulation or the running of the short-term rental program, I guess you can call it, or licensing? And it seemed like, again, I wondered, why are we doing this when, you know, there's money coming in, we're going to have to pay somebody to, or a lot of people to run it? And it just seemed to me that although we've gotten to this point, I still, I still wonder, you know, what are we exactly, what are our goals? And, and lastly, I heard the earlier comment about the dogs and the beach and all that and, you know, and, and it brought me back to Goose Rock's Beach, not having to worry about being left out of the, the count because they're out of the count. And then you have people saying, well, we're in Goose Rock's Beach, we don't want dogs on the beach. And I just thought, my gosh, I have a dog, I know lots of people that have dogs, birds urinate and poop on the, on the beach. Birds urinate and poop on the, on the beach. People do things in the water and everyone pays taxes. And it would seem to me that although I don't like when dogs poop on the beach or they pee on, you know, on the beach, people do clean up after their dogs. And as long as they do that, they should have the right to do that. I just hope we're not getting so exclusionary or wonderful Kennebunkport area that we have an exclusionary group of people deciding or think they're deciding what, what should be done with that beach. You know, it's, I think what the committee did was very good there. I think the selectmen are trying to do the right thing on this short-term rental ordinance. And of course, you know, our administrators as well, you know. I just wonder, what are we going to gain by making this so difficult?
Sharon, first thing, it's not, it's not an exclusivity with anybody. It's, it all goes to the voters to be voted on in June. So the best way for you and others to express their opinions, I really do believe this, is to go to the ballot box and express your opinion. And if it passes, it passes. If any of these ordinance changes pass, they pass. If they don't, they don't. It's a separate majority, but that's your opportunity to express the way you feel.
Unfortunately, I can't because I am not a main resident.
That makes it difficult to vote in Kennebunkport.
It does.
It's up to the voters of Kennebunkport to determine whether or not these ordinance have passed or they're not.
Thanks, Sharon.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Any more hands?
Hi, I think I was on mute. Yes, so similar to Sharon, my comments relate to the additional cost that the town is undertaking for a problem that doesn't appear to be much of a problem. Short-term rentals have been around in Kennebunkport for a very long time. I think the primary concern has been with a few short-term rentals in areas of town other than a Goose Rock's beach. But we're talking about adding a new position at $115,000 per year, as well as a computer expense of $50,000, when it seems like the number of short-term rentals could probably easily be managed through an access database or an Excel spreadsheet. And if you add inflationary costs over time, it just seems when the town is looking at $3.6 million for a new town hall, has recently purchased 10 million, floated a bond for $10 million for a community property in town, that we're adding expense on the backs of taxpayers. And many of us are second homeowners in the area that don't have a right to vote. So I'm just wondering whether the cure is worse than the problem based in terms of the administrative burden that we're talking about to monitor what has not seemed to be a big problem. We have noise ordinance regulations in place and there have been, there's no record in the town police of issues with short-term rentals. So it just seems like a very high expense and an anti-second homeowner proposition for those of us that are not able to use our homes without renting them to defray the expense. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more hands? Okay.
We have another hand.
Oh, okay.
I just needed to unmute myself. Did that work, guys?
Yep, we hear your phone, Bill.
You know, Mike, this is my only opportunity to speak on the ordinance because I, like others, don't live in the town and don't have a vote. And I guess, you know, I haven't, I haven't said much in the last couple of weeks on the topic, but I thought an awful lot about it in that time. And, and I think you probably all know that I was supportive of the ordinance and I was supportive of the ordinance because I thought it was a way to minimize the traffic on the beach. And at the same point in time, perhaps prolong the sewer system. And what I personally saw of the ordinance was that there might be some teeth in limiting the number of occupants per building, so something like two per bedroom. And you all know, I've talked a lot about it. We're close to the two per bedroom in the ordinance, but what really bothers me is I cannot under, I just don't see how it's going to be enforced. And, and as a result of that, if I had a vote, I couldn't support it. And, you know, I was willing to pay a fee if I was comfortable with the support. And from my experience, and our property's been in the rental market for, since 1961, when we've owned it and prior to that. And I think I'm, I think I would probably speak for others at the same point in time, that we're highly confident that the local agents, along with the homeowners, if they knew that these were the rules, we would all comply with them and we wouldn't need this ordinance. But anyway, I guess, so I guess, you know, Mike, if I had a vote in this thing, I would sadly have to say, you know, it's not going to work for me. And I would urge you to consider, at least to consider giving it a year with the rules. And if the rules, the two per bedroom, the rules that you've written, if they don't get you what you need, then you could come back at it. But at least give the agents and the owners an opportunity to perform. And if we could perform to your satisfaction, then maybe we don't need this ordinance. So that's, that's it on that. But for those of you that, that have a vote, this is a very, and I don't know who's in the audience who's just listening in, but this is a very complex piece of, I'll call it, rulemaking. And, you know, I can tell you that an awful lot of effort has been put into this and the board and the employees of the town are to be commended. But for those of you that have a vote, I urge you to closely read and understand the terms. For instance, there is an exclusion for seasonal rental accommodations. If you work close, you know what that means. But if you're not close, you may, you may have to spend a little time understanding that. There's also no exception for casual rentals. Those are not reasons that I would vote against it. I just don't think there's enough in here for enforcement to get, to get it upheld. So I would hope, I guess the most, most important thing for me is if you would consider giving us a year to try and produce without the ordinance. And if we can't get there, then I guess we've left you no choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Any more hands?
Warner, sorry, I wasn't exactly planning to speak when I logged in, so bear with me. With all due respect to everything that you all do for the town, I, it's, it was brought up that this is not meant to be exclusionary. And yet, the people who are affected by this, the vast majority of the people who will be affected by this ordinance are not going to be allowed to vote on it because they're not residents. And to me, that seems like the very definition of exclusionary. Now, I mean, maybe I'm misunderstanding that, but it just, it just doesn't seem right. And I am, in fact, a member of a family that owns a short-term rental property. In fact, one of our concerns is that our property is illegal two-family property, which presumably, from what we've understood, means we'll have to get two licenses. And, you know, and so the expense adds up. We worked very hard to keep our rents low because we want to encourage families to be able to come to Kennebunkport to enjoy the town, to enjoy the beaches. And this is going to raise our rent significantly. And we really, I mean, we really, really don't want to do that. We want families to be able to come, to be able to afford to come. So I just, I'd ask you to keep that in mind as you continue to move forward with this. And then, also, I have some concerns about the, I guess, the pay rate for the new position that will have to be created. I mean, again, it seems like a very large number and I happen to work in labor. So I'm very curious to know where that number came up, came from. The 115,000 or 119,000, I've seen both for this new position that will have to be created. I also have concerns about the software. As was pointed out, there are existing software programs that likely already are in the system that could probably handle a lot of this already. And to spend that large of a chunk of money on something that could be done with existing software programs is a little bit of a concern. And I would like to know more about that if possible. Thank you.
You're welcome. Did you want to answer that, Warner?
Yeah, sure, I can, I can give some insight in terms of, you know, the software piece of it. So, you know, the software that we've been looking at, you know, for the spokesmen, you can certainly, you know, do, do research is, you know, is through a company called Host Compliance. And, and there are numerous companies out there that, you know, that offer and deal with short-term rental. And so what you have is you have a combination of, of short-term rental ordinance tracking. So in other words, you know, you have a software that, you know, that looks across the board as far as on the internet and monitors multiple sites of, you know, a full collection of all of the, all of the short-term rentals that are advertised on all your major sites. And so it keeps track of that and it also, they, it updates on a regular basis in terms of that inventory. And so, you know, so there's a, you know, there's the tracking component piece of it. Then there's also the, the piece of it relative to the licensing piece. So from what I've seen, it's, you know, the goal and intent would be to have a relatively user-friendly online permitting process in, you know, in which, you know, that would limit, you know, would limit staff time, would hopefully make it more, you know, more user-friendly for, you know, for the end user, you know, as well as for staff to go in then and approve applications. There's also a, you know, a complaint hotline component piece that, you know, that if, you know, folks had complaints relative to, you know, to a short-term rental, that they would be able to call in and those complaints would be logged and monitored and then, and passed along. So, so it's quite a bit more than just, you know, than just an Excel spreadsheet in terms of putting in, you know, putting in data or an access database. You know, and we have discussed the numbers and, you know, in terms of the budget numbers that were put together, you know, where, you know, where this would be the first year that we are trying to figure out just how many, you know, short-term rentals that, you know, that may register in town, you know, that is still a little bit of an unknown. And so, you know, the budget, you know, you know, the budget number, you know, that you see there, you know, just anticipates a, you know, a high number of short-term, of short-term rentals. And so ultimately, you know, the way that most of these contracts work out is that you pay based on the number of, you know, pay based on the number of short-term rentals that you actually have in town. And so, you know, our budget conversations is that, you know, the, you know, the budget numbers, hopefully these are, these are pass-through numbers. So revenue that's collected through, you know, your short-term rental ordinance collection fees are you offset, you know, the staff costs, you know, as well as the, you know, the software and licensing. You know, the, I think what we tried to capture with, you know, with the position is that, you know, and similar to a lot of other communities who have this, they tried to figure out, you know, how much staff time gets spent with short-term rentals and, and, you know, to figure out kind of a general cost in terms of time. And so, you know, it's a little bit, you know, of, of, I would say, an educated guess to say how much time is going to be spent on this. And, you know, we've certainly, we've done our best to, you know, to try to capture that. You know, I think the first year will definitely be telling us in terms of what, you know, our costs and expenses are, you know, relative to implementing and enforcing, you know, this proposed ordinance.
Thanks, Warner, for answering the questions. Great. Anybody else?
Yes, hello. I have noted that most of the prior speakers have been people who have an interest in the town, probably own property in the town, but are not residents and not voters in the town. And in fact, that is the reality of our town. We are a vacation community and a significant proportion of our properties are indeed vacation properties for people whose primary residence is elsewhere. And I would suspect that among that population, a, an even greater percentage are those who are indeed renters, be they short-term or long-term renters. But as one for whom Kennebunkport is a primary site of residency, I think this ordinance is very, very important because it will establish some boundaries. It will establish some necessary neighborhood-friendly behaviors or, or at least consciousness that have previously been kind of, perhaps assumed or a best gentleman's agreement. But I think it truly is necessary. And indeed, the description of the cost of registering, to what I have observed on short-term rental websites, the annual cost of a license would probably be less than most renters are getting for one night, say nothing about a season. So I don't think it is onerous to those to register their sites and to be subject to the oversight, which is in the protection of both the resident, residential community and to the potential renters. We do not have any, any safety oversight or, or so on as we would with a hotel or, or that such. So I approve that the ordinance should go forward. And indeed, I look forward to the protection that it would provide to the residents of Kennebunkport.
Thanks, Richard.
Thank you, Richard.
Okay, I'll take one more hand if they have one. You see no more hands? Okay. Moving right along. C, proposed amendments to administrative code. You want to comment on this, Warner?
Sure. You know, so this, you know, this proposed amendment here, we would, you know, would simply take, you know, the role of the assessor and, and put that into staff, into staff position. So, you know, right now, in the, well, in the state of Maine, you know, communities have a choice to pick how they, how they administer the assessing functions in their town. So, you know, right now, in this, well, in the state of Maine, you know, communities have a choice to pick how they, how they administer the assessing functions in their town. You know, sometimes the Board of Selectmen, you know, actually perform the, you know, the job duties of assessor. Some towns have an agent, and, and many communities have, you know, a certified assessor, you know, on staff that handles all of administrative functions as well as, you know, all of the legal requirements. And so, so what we've been doing here in town is that we have, you know, so we have Becky Nallett on staff, who is a certified main assessor. She's been with us for a number of years. Does all of the assessing work for you all? You know, with the exception of some of the legal decisions that are then brought to the Board of Selectmen. And so this warrant article, as proposed, would allow the selectmen to appoint Becky to the position of assessor as opposed to just the agent, which better reflects her actual role and work duties that she performs.
All right. Thanks, Warner. Any hands raised? No hands raised. Okay, I am going to go ahead. I want to thank everybody for this evening so far on these three items that we talked about. A lot of clarification tonight. That's great. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Okay. Five point one. Unveiling of a town report dedication. And I'm really proud tonight to announce that the select board had decided to go ahead and dedicate this year's town report to Wayne T., in memory of Wayne T. Adams. I, I knew Wayne for a real long time. He was a a great citizen of Kenny Bunkport. He was always there to help anybody. He was always there. I can remember him when he was moderator of Town of Kenny Bunkport. He moved it right along to the great job with that. I see him on the road all the time. He'd always take the time to stop and talk with you. And quite frankly, he's sadly, sadly missed. That's for sure. I'd like to go ahead and make a, read the dedication. Town report dedication in memory of Wayne T. Adams. Wayne Adams was a personification of service above itself, whether he was serving the local community or our country. Wayne's commitment to public service was an inspiration. Local commitments include serving as past president of the Kenny Bunk Rotary Club, past Commodore of the Kenny Bunk River Club, vestment of St. David's Apostical Church, and St. Anne's Apostical Church, past master of the Rundle Lodge, number seventy-six, grand master of Masons, Masonic Education and Lodge Services Committee, director of the Maine Masonic Charitable Foundation, and he did an awful lot of work with that, a tremendous amount of work. Ancient accepted scars right valley of Portland Knights Templar, a noble of Chorashrine Shrine Temple and chair of Camp Bunkport's Administrative Code Committee. As if that wasn't enough, Wayne was also a part of the Royal Order of Justice. Looking beyond our local community, Wayne served his country in many capacities, including United States Army, Army Active Reserve, and the Foreign Service of the State Department. Two local influences that Wayne will be remembered for the most are his Christmas tree farm and his longtime service as town moderator, meeting moderator for both Kenny Bunk and Kenny Bunkport. His booming voice, sense of humor, and huge smile will be missed at future Kenny Bunkport Town meetings. May Wayne's legacy be his faithful commitment and thorough enjoyment of giving back to others. That's, that was a really nice dedication. Is Sarah in the audience? Oh, hi, Sarah. How you doing?
You did a beautiful job reading that, and wouldn't he be thrilled to be sitting here even remotely to visit with each of you? There is probably nothing that my father loved more, aside from his grandchildren, that is to be a part and a son of Kenny Bunkport. So I know he'd be tickled pink, and it is so fun to know that my niece and nephew in Oaxaca, Mexico are watching. And Pat, they're keeping an eye on you. My little niece is saying, I recognize him. So it's quite fun, and thank you all so much because it means so much to us, because it means so much to him. So thank you.
Well, thanks, Sarah. I'm glad to see you. Stop by and see us sometime.
Oh, we'll be down for our lobster soon. Thank you, and it's great to see you all. Thank you, Sheila. Thank you, Warren. Good to see you, Sarah.
Okay. Okay, item six, consider renewal liquor license applications submitted by a Rundle Wharf restaurant located at forty-three Ocean Avenue. I have a first.
I'll second.
I have a second. Okay, Sheila.
Aye.
Yeah.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Alan says aye, motion carries. Okay, item seven. Consider renewal liquor licenses applications submitted by New Set LLC located at two Pier Road. I have a first. I have two firsts and one second. Can't beat that, right? So staff recommends approval of this license. So we're going to go ahead and do a call. Sheila.
Aye.
Pat.
Aye.
Spike.
Aye.
Alan says aye, motion carries. Item eight, presentation of award to Addie Redman. Chief Ever, is he in the? Can you bring up the chief? Hi. Hi, chief.
Hi. So this is back in the end of March, we had a, one of many windstorms this early spring, late winter, whatever. And there was a tree that had got into the wires on Corn Brook Lane where Addie lives. And we just wanted to recognize Addie. She noticed it. She noticed the danger. There was a small fire and, at the base of the tree from the arcing. But we wanted to recognize her for, for what she did in, in doing the right thing and notifying the, the fire department, and, and we came out there, obviously, and took care of it, along with CMP. The, the, the best thing about this for me is when we're teaching kids in school fire safety things, we're also teaching them about situational awareness. And this was absolutely situational awareness. She saw, she was paying attention to what was going on around her and didn't put herself in danger because of it, and did the right thing by, you know, shooting home and, and contacting us. So I just, yesterday I was able to give her an award. I'm just going to share my screen real quick. There was a picture, maybe?
Oh, it's nice.
Yeah, okay. I, I don't see it online, so, so that was just the presentation with her family and, and other members of, of that neighborhood who helped bring it to our attention. And so that's what we were doing. And she's a great kid. And congratulations, Addie. Job well done.
Absolutely, Addie. Job well done, for sure.
It's a round.
Quite a cowboy hat you have. Or cowgirl hat, excuse me. Sheila, did you want to say something?
No, I think she needs a round of applause.
Okay.
For somebody that young. That's serious. Yeah, very nice.
Anything you'd like to say, Addie? Oh. She's, no, she's muted.
It doesn't show muted, but we can't hear Addie. Oh, must not working.
Well, Addie, thank you very much. You did a great job, and that's quite a plaque.
You should be very proud.
That's right. Absolutely. Bye.
Bye.
Item nine, presentation by the Colony Hotel. I think John Martin, is John? Out in the audience, I think he wants to do a presentation for the Colony Hotel.
Yes, we have John Martin and Bill Walsh. I noticed that Amy McNally has her hand up. Oh, that's up to the board.
Yeah, if she wants to.
Good evening, Amy, attorney Amy McNally from Ralph Austin's office. I'm standing for him this evening.
Okay, great. So John, would you like to go ahead and take us where you want to take us to?
Yeah, we're going to actually let Bill Walsh lead us off here.
Okay.
Thanks, thanks, Sean. Again, Bill Walsh, Walsh Engineering. We were in front of you back in January, presenting to the, the board about some improvements that we want to be done down on Colony Avenue. With that input that we got from you, and talking with some of the staff members, both Warner and Lori, and police chief, we've sort of modified our plan, come back with a different, slightly different plan. We have, if I can share my screen quickly. We have this plan. Hopefully you can see that. We have this, this is Ocean Avenue off on the left-hand side here, Colony Ave, that, that stretches across. So just to orient you, this would be the Colony Hotel down on the bottom where it says right-of-way submission. What we have done is in a couple of places here, we had some parking places that encroached into the right-of-way. Those have been pulled back. That's what you can see in this gray area here. So we've withdrawn those back from the, from the right-of-way. We have also, I guess there was a discussion about the lighting out on Colony Avenue, and we have actually removed that from the plan. So we no longer have any street lighting proposed in Colony Avenue. What we are asking the, the board to consider are some sidewalk improvements, which are in blue here. This would be a new sidewalk along this side of Ocean Avenue that would come down to a couple of crosswalks, and it extends up the, the side, well, this is existing sidewalk here, but then we would pick it up again in the, what we call the oval of, of the parking areas at, at the Colony Avenue, or at the Colony Hotel, rather. These sidewalks would be consistent, I'm sure you all know, consistent with the sidewalks that exist down on Ocean Avenue. I think that the Colony did construct their concrete sidewalks, their brushed, brushed finish, so they're, they have a little bit of texture to them, just to make sure nobody's slipping on them. But they're a, a concrete sidewalk, which in the world of sidewalks have the longer, the longest longevity, if you will, of sidewalks. We did coordinate with the police chief, and we got, and talked about these crosswalks that we've changed these slightly since we were here with you before, but got those in a place where the police chief felt comfortable with them. We have them here crossing Colony Avenue and a couple crossing Ocean Avenue. We have reduced curb cuts, or we will, with, with the approved plan, hopefully with the planning board, along the north side of Colony Avenue here. We're going, I think, from four down to three. And on this side, we're eliminating one as well on the south side of Colony Avenue. So we're trying to make that a little bit less, less intersections are better from a, from a traffic perspective. We are proposing a couple of, you can, I should have colored these, and I apologize I didn't, but there are a couple of stone walls here that are proposed at the entrances. As you probably all know, there are these arced stone walls at the existing colony. And what we want to do is replicate those to indicate the entrances to the, what we call the north side. So those, those walls would actually be within, partially within the right-of-way, and we would keep those at least six feet back from the edge of the, of the Colony, of Colony Ave, and allow for, you know, snow plowing along there. We'll certainly work with, with the Highway Department and Public Works to make sure we get those in the right place. We do have a few trees that we're sort of proposing, mostly on the edges of the, of the plantings and trees along the edges of, of the right-of-way. There would be a few in there, and we understand that both the trees and the potential walls in here that the Colony would sign an agreement with the town to remove those if the town requested them to do so. So we, we understand that that would be like a licensed position that would, would be taken. We also, and I'm not sure how well we pointed this out before, but this gray area right here is, is Colony Ave. It's a pro- a proposed reconstruction of Colony Avenue. When I say reconstruction, we would take out the road, the pavement. We would take out the gravel, and we would replace that gravel. It's like building a new road. It, it is building a new road all the way through here. We're going to improve. There's a hump right in the center of this. You probably all have driven over that, but there's kind of a hump there that, that's not great for sight distance. It's a little, from an engineering standpoint, it's just difficult to see over. So that hump would be, the elevation of it would be lowered, and it would be just a, it would be better from a sight distance and safety standpoint. So in that, the, you know, the, what would we come back with when we, when we finish this is a complete reconstructed Colony Ave. It's about six hundred and fifty feet, or six hundred and forty feet, I guess, of Colony Ave that would be reconstructed. So with that, John, do you have any more things that you would like to add?
No, Bill, I think you did a great job. I think we wanted to just thank the board for their feedback from our last submission. I think we've done quite a bit of adjustments to the plans on your recommendations. I would mention that some of those trees are existing trees, and we are more than willing and open to listen to any of the feedback we get from the arborist of the town. Don't think that's a landscape architect plan by any stretch of the imagination, and we obviously want it to be in conjunction with what the town thinks is important for Colony Ave. If we were told, don't plant any trees, we would listen to that, but I have a feeling you'd probably like to see more trees than not, and that's kind of what we're hoping to build is a garden sort of situation on either side of the road. But other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions or address any issues that you might have. We are, we have been requested to approach you because we are holding on our submission for the building permit, because part of this is such an integral part of the plan that we really can't move forward with that process until we get authorization to make a decision, one way or the other, how we would treat the entrances to Colony Ave. I think that's, that's pretty much all I have, unless anyone has any questions for me.
John, this is my question. I just, on this road and sidewalks, Colony is paying the bill for all of that?
Yeah, we've, we've met with the sewer district and the water district. The sewer believes that it is, the sewer is going to be fine. This project is already slated for the water district, so we're trying to work in conjunction with them to try to find where we can get some benefits for cost sharing, for pipe and items like that. But yes, the Colony is proposing paying for the sidewalk and the road repair. We got an estimated bill of something around two hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
And, and my other question would be, if you're coordinating the, the specification of the road with Mike Claus and so forth?
Yeah, we're working directly with Mike, not only on the road, but also our request to put the entrance columns. We talked a lot about plowing sightlines. We would also want to remind you that we did talk with the police chief and the fire chief regarding all those entrances to make sure that there's no conflict or any problem with either their concerns of egress for bigger trucks or for sightlines for pedestrians.
Okay, thanks, John.
Sure, Mike, thank you.
Are you all, do you have any questions for John? No? Well, I would like to see somebody make a motion to go ahead and accept the sidewalk and the stone wall in, in the right-of-way along with the trees.
I will make that motion.
Okay. So.
I'll second that. I'll second.
I have a first, and I have a second. Any more conversation on this? No?
I just want to say to the public that the, the selectmen were all invited to call it the Colony, and all of this was explained to us in detail, and that's where we asked our questions. So this is not new to us.
And I think the public asked a lot of questions. I think, John, you invited quite a few people several different times to come up and, and just chat about it and everything, so you could explain it to them, and you, you had a lot of positive feedback, correct?
We did. We invited our butters. We also invited some neighbors in the neighborhood we thought that might, even though they weren't at butters, like across from Fairfield Creek, they would have a view of what we're doing. Technically not at butters, but we also want to remind everyone who might be listening that as, this is going to be a long process, and as we are going through this process, we are more than welcome to discuss how things are progressing, and we're more than welcome to give a presentation at the Colony if anyone would like to see what we're proposing. and we're more than welcome to give a presentation at the Colony if anyone would like to see what we're proposing. We want to make sure that this goes smoothly for everybody, both in the neighborhood and also for the town. So we're excited about the project, but we also understand it's gonna be a process.
Okay, well, thank you. Laurie, did we get enough information in the motion?
What if we, what if we change the motion to say that we approve the plan as presented tonight? So that includes everything that we talked about tonight?
And you, and so you would authorize us to work on an agreement with the Colony to bring back to you? And then, of course, we'll need town meeting approval for the sidewalk eventually.
Yeah, correct. I think we're all happy with it. So let's have a mo, I have a motion, I have a second. So I'm gonna take a vote. Pat?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Sheila?
Aye.
Alan says aye, motion carries. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with it.
We're, we're excited. Thank you very much.
You have a good evening. Bye. Sheila, do you want to say something?
Nope.
Oh, okay, I thought you had to.
Nope, just changing my page.
Okay. Item ten, consider government WAF budget. Chris?
Jen Lord will come up for the budgets as well, first, Jen. So in regards to the government WAF budget, it is very similar in nature to previous budgets. I think there was some slight changes based on expenses. Jen, do you have anything else to add, or Chris?
The only thing I'll add is that some people were reclassified and things like that. As you'll see, like lobster men, the next year's gonna be higher, commercial dues is a little lower. So people went into different categories for revenues.
Okay.
But that usually happens every year that we go through the membership and make sure people are in the right category.
Board have any questions?
No.
Make a motion to accept the budget.
I'll second.
Have a first and a second. Okay, Sheila?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Aye.
Alan says aye, motion carries. Okay, the Cape Porpoise Pier Budget. Item eleven. Chris?
Yeah, so just briefly, we, Jen and I, and as well as the Cape Porpoise Pier Committee, have reviewed my budget for FY22. With a flat-lined operational budget and some increases due to general, general cost increases for services, we had a small deficit of $5,700 and change. In order to make that up, we proposed increasing pier dues or increasing fuel surcharge. When presented to the Pier Committee, the Pier Committee decided that a 10-cent increase on fuel would cover the expenses, the budget shortfall, and that's where we landed.
Oh, your budget for FY22 is $345,227.
Yep.
Anybody have any questions for Chris or Jen?
Nope.
What's that, Mike?
Pretty straightforward.
Yep.
Can I have a motion?
Still moved.
I have a first and a second. Okay. Hey, Sheila?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Alan says aye, motion carries. Item twelve. Thanks, Chris. Item twelve, consider dog square parking lot budget. That's you, wasn't it, Jen?
So the dog square parking lot budget is user fee-based, and we use it to pay for things related to dog squares as well. So this year, we also, starting last year, I should say, we started putting the dog square officers that we hire for the summer in this budget, and took it out of the general fund. And this year, we're also transferring $40,000 in capital expense related to main street paving project. The fees for the dog square parking lot should remain the same, and it's already been a busy, busy year down there. I'd say we've only been open a few days.
So we really weren't that far off. I mean, we're like $40,000 off from the year before.
Yeah.
That's not as bad as I thought we were gonna be.
No, I know.
Yeah. Pretty happy about that, that's for sure.
Well, we also increased the charge, too.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. So can I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to accept the budget.
Second.
Have a first and a second. Any discussion? Any more discussion? Okay, excuse me. Sheila?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Mike? Alan says aye, motion carries. Okay, thirteen, consider Recreation Special Revenue Budget. Breeze?
Hey, good afternoon. Hope everybody can hear me. I had a lot more planned for tonight, but I can see how to share my screen. It's been a while. Yep, I see that, but I don't see the tab that I'm looking for.
Well, why don't you just give us a brief overview, Breeze?
Sure. So with the brief overview that we have, what I really wanted to highlight is just things that are gonna be coming back that we weren't able to do during the pandemic, and to start off with that, that was one of our drop-in sports got cut during the pandemic. We want to bring back the soccer, softball, pickleball, basketball, and volleyball. In addition to that, in September, we want to bring back the senior luncheons in conjunction with Public Works, and we've heard a lot of good buzz about that.
Give me public health.
Health, excuse me, thank you. And beyond that, we want to bring back the Conscience and the Long, and tournaments such as softball, hockey, and biggest entertainment we're gonna be taking. And 2021 is bringing back summer camp. We were able to do some mini-camps and a team camp last summer. So we're feeling pretty confident in our abilities to provide a safe summer camp this year. Some of the new programs that we're, we have done is we did an egg hunt with the local children around Kenny Bunkport. It was called that Cape Port Extravaganza, and we were able to serve over 100 kids there, which we were pretty happy with, and we'd like to build upon for next year. We were able to secure a $650 grant from the Education Foundation of Kenny Bunk Sand Rundle, which we are buying some, some clay throwing wheels, which we will be using for the summer as well. So for our future plans, what we are continuing to look forward with is to continue to meet the needs of the community and maintain our flexibility while continuing to be a community hub and keeping safety as a number one priority.
The Highway Department's doing a great job on the softball field.
They are, yeah. They are killing it down there.
Yeah, they are. They're, they're right in tune with it. They're having a good time making it, doing a great job.
Yep, and as soon as they're done with that, I'm gonna give anchor fencing a call, and we'll be done with it, hopefully.
So how about a, are you finished?
I am, I am, sir.
Well, thank you.
I'm going to accept the budget.
Okay, I have a first. Can I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second. Okay, roll call, Sheila?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Alan says aye, motion carries, and I want to say that you guys are doing a great job with the recreation.
Thank you, Alan.
Breeze, it's nice to see you, but Carol, we miss you, and I know you're watching.
Okay. Item fourteen. Award bid for the SCBA bottles. Chief Stil, there's John. You wanna bring John up?
Here I am again. So this is just a purchase that's, that's normal, our SCBA bottles, because they're made out of a composite material. DOT has a law that rule that they are only good for 15 years. So I have a bunch of bottles, I actually have about 40 that are going out of service the end of this month. And I'm gonna replace 10 of them, or 12 of them now. The reason I'm lowering that number is, A, we're, we're a little heavy in bottles. Prior administrations have been buying bottles every year. I don't need to do that. And we'll have a, a almost three-to-one ratio of our bottles compared to our air packs that the bottles go in. We're only required to have a two-year, two bottles per pack ratio. But this, this is part of the whole plan. I'm asking for the money to come out of that SCBA account that we started on the capital side to, when we eventually have to go to replace all our air packs, and I want to say it's five more years. So this is all, this is all part of it. I may have to buy some more bottles as we go, as more come out of service over, over these next few years, too. But it's all part of what I figured in on that $35,000 a year that we've been putting aside for this.
So how do you dispose of the bottles that are no longer in use?
Well, right now, I've been hanging on to them, only because you, you don't get very much as far as scrap goes, because it's a carbon fiber and the aluminum shell inside. So you don't get like the full aluminum price. There's, there's really nowhere to get rid of them.
Really?
Yeah, other than, other than scrapping them. And they, the scrapper, like say up in Arundel on Route One, they want it cut in half first, because it can't be anything that could be used again as, as a high-pressure vessel. These bottles are 4,500 PSI when they're full.
That's a lot.
Yeah.
So eventually, you're gonna have to find a spot for them.
Yeah, though having 40 come out all at once is gonna force me to that, because I don't have the room for them, but I haven't, I haven't had the time to figure that out, and I'll, I'd be happy to come before the board with, this is what I want to do, and, and get the board's blessing.
Okay. Can I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
For first and a second, any more discussion? Okay, I'll take a roll call. Sheila?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Alan says aye, motion carries.
Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jay.
Okay.
Have a good night. Okay, other business. Sheila?
None.
Pat?
Nothing.
Mike?
Oh, none.
Alan has none. I bet the town management might have some. It's been three weeks, so, no? Again? Nothing?
Don't lift, don't, don't look and give towards in the mouth.
That's right. Motion to approve the treasure warrant.
Second.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Sheila?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Alan says aye, motion carries. Okay, we, we have three executive sessions to go into. I'm gonna go ahead and read them. Executive session per MRSA 1, Section 405-60 for union negotiations. And then, item, we have to do a vote on that, on the executive, we do, yeah. So I need to have an executive, I need to go ahead and have a vote. So Sheila?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Alan says aye, motion carries. Okay, item eighteen. Executive, executive session per MRSA 1, 405-6E for discussion of disposal, disposition of real estate. Sheila?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Alan says aye, motion carries. Excuse me. Okay, and the last one. Executive session for consulting, consultation between the Board of Selectmen and its attorney concerning their legal rights and duties for pending or contemplated litigation. Sheila?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Alan says aye, motion carries, and there won't be any decisions made tonight on anything, any of these three executive sessions. So I guess.
And then you plan to adjourn after that?
And we do a plan to adjourn after that, yes. So we're finished tonight so far, and we'll switch over onto the executive session. Thank you, everybody, for showing up on Zoom tonight.
So we leave and come back, right?
Coming to your other invite meeting.
Yeah.